Good evening and welcome to the March twenty fifth, twenty twenty five school committee meeting here at Tingsboro PDC Room at High School. My name's Anthony Tenerell. I officially call this meeting to order. I will remind everyone that these meetings are audio and video recorded. And I will start with introductions to my lounge.
Evan Cody.
Rick Borchman.
Becky Stanton.
Mike Woodlock, Assistant Superintendent. Hi, Mike Flanagan, Superintendent.
Daniela Thanos.
Ryan McMahon.
Stacy Guido.
Rob Mullin.
Joe Messina, Business Administrator.
And if you'll please rise for the vote of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. This time of year, when we discuss budgets, we need to have a public hearing to discuss our proposed twenty twenty six school budget. So at this time, I will seek a motion to suspend the regular meeting and open a public hearing on the twenty twenty six budget.
So moved.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, that carries. And we are in our public meeting. And I believe we'll turn that over to Mr. Messina.
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
So a brief history for the public and anybody watching the meeting. Back on January twenty eighth, we had a budget that eventually essentially brought over the current staff. Given all of changes in pricing and staff payroll, we had about a three hundred and ninety thousand dollar overage. And the superintendent had identified an additional two point four positions that we were looking to add into the budget model. So what we did back on February twenty fifth, a month ago, we brought the school committee budget for next year to this school committee that was balanced at the two point seven percent growth and included those additional two point four positions. This model has a full-time equivalent staff of two hundred and thirty six point one, which is actually four point two lower than the FY twenty five initial budget of two hundred and forty point three staff. But again, it is a balanced budget with your two point seven percent growth as indicated by the town manager in cooperation with us. So in front of you tonight is that same budget that was presented to you on February twenty fifth and available for any public comment that might come out today.
Thank you. Seeing no one from the public, does anyone on this board have anything to us? I'd like to thank you on this portion of the hearing for all the work you, you and your staff and our administration does to put this together every year. I know it's a lot of work, so thank you very much for that. I will seek a motion to adjourn the public hearing and return to our regular meeting.
So moved.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, that carries. So at this time, I will seek a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty six budget as presented in the public hearing with a total school expenditure of twenty seven million four hundred and forty four thousand, six hundred and thirty eight dollars. And school committee budget of twenty four million ninety seven thousand, four hundred and four dollars.
I move to accept, to approve the FY twenty twenty six budget as presented.
Second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, that carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Messina, again, for all the work you put into that each and every year. Approval of minutes from March eleventh, twenty twenty five school committee minutes. Seek a motion to approve those.
Uh, so moved.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, that carries. Citizens' time? Seeing none. Correspondents, we're going to hold off until later in the presentation.
Please, thank you, Mr. Chair.
We have no personnel at this time. Share the success. Evan Cody, please.
At TES, several grade levels are incorporating flexible grouping during wind, during wind blocks to maximize opportunities for intervention and enrichment. TES will highlight their successes with this, with this in next month's video update, The Bridge. TES is looking for, TES is looking forward to student representatives presenting at the school committee meeting on April eighth. The presentation will provide an update on the update of wind blocks, special subject offerings, grade six transition, and end of year events. TES Student Council members have organized a drive to collect food and supplies for families in need. The drive runs through this Friday, March twenty eighth. Donations can be dropped off in the main lobby at TES. At TMS, as we enter the third trimester, it is a busy time for eighth grade students. In two weeks, they take the ELA MCAS, and in three weeks, they go to Washington, DC. The PALS program is going on a field trip to the Tingsboro Sports Center with over thirty students participating. At THS, sophomores took the ELA MCAS exam. They will take the math MCAS in May. Students in grades eight through eleven received instruction on how to complete their course requests for the twenty five to twenty six school year. The deadline to submit requests, request was today, March twenty fifth. THS is once again participating in the Massachusetts State Seal of Literacy Program. The State Seal of Literacy will be awarded to high school seniors who are able to demonstrate proficiency and literacy in two or more languages as measured by state-approved assessments. Spring sports are underway with games beginning next week. Theater recently cast their upcoming show, Six. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Subcommittee update, Barrett?
Yes, the Policy Subcommittee met for the meeting with the superintendent, and we'll have two policies coming up in new business for first reads.
Excellent.
All right, and we also have the Super Attendant Evaluation Subcommittee meeting on April eighth.
Correct.
So for those of you on that committee, we will see you then. Unfinished business, MSBA update.
Thank you, Chair. We'll jump into the slide deck at this time. Just a reminder about our upcoming meetings, April seventh, we have a tri board meeting with our state legislators. I'll talk a little bit about that in a minute when I get to the correspondence part of the agenda here. We heard, just heard from Evan that TES will present on the eighth, and TMS has come into our meeting on the twenty ninth. High school will be back in May, so that is coming up on the rotation. As far as correspondence, I just wanted to keep the, the committee abreast of where we are with the Memorial Valley Superintendent Association. Last Friday, we had our legislative breakfast. Pleased with the turnout of nearly sixty people in the room. And really, that was our opportunity as educational leaders and superintendents really to advocate for, really for a voice, really for a voice at the State House. We had great representation by our local legislators, but we really talked specifically about MASSS priority number one, the long-term health and sustainability of funding with special education. And what we did was we took a, four colleagues of ours who were part of the MVSA, Tuxbury, Westford, Woburn, and Methuen, and we looked at all funding and all spending special ed-related, whether it was out of district, whether it was transportation, whether it was OSD charges, and we looked at a comparative analysis, and all the information is in the drive for you to really look at. But the, the real telling thing was the story is the same in every community. No one is alone. As we, as we struggle with out-of-district costs and transportation costs, we are absolutely not alone. And it was interesting, it was, it was actually effective to have the legislators in the room. So as these four districts are telling their story, every other district could nod their head in agreement and say, yes, we feel the same pain. You know, one of the senators made a great recommendation, you know, potentially we could have a regional coordinator for some of the special education out-of-district transportation. Yeah, that would be great. However, legally, we can't do that because we have to provide door-to-door service. So to me, that emphasized the fact that we need this legislation passed so that we have a seat at the table. Right now, we heard from one of the representatives that, you know, we've been talking about this for years. Right. We've been talking about this for years. When the rubber hits the road, nothing changes. We need to get a task force, a commission. We need to bring people in the room to advocate and say, the cost of special education and everything associated with it is unsustainable. The fact that OSD can raise the, the, the price for out-of-district placement by fourteen percent, and our circuit breaker, our circuit breaker reimbursement, which by law is supposed to be seventy five percent, is forty four percent this year. By law, it's supposed to be seventy five percent. So we can continue to have this conversation, but we really advocated for, we need you to sign on and support this piece of legislation, which calls for a task force to come together and start having these conversations in a meaningful manner. We talk about them generically all, all the time as we go through the budget process, but we really need to advocate with our legislators to bring this to fruition. So when we have our tri board meeting on the seventh, with the permission of the chair and the committee, I would like to really strongly advocate that action needs to take place with MASSS priority number one so that something is done. We need to stop talking about it, and something needs to happen. So, um, so I got my soapbox there, but it, it, it's, it's an issue that we all acknowledge, and we continue to acknowledge, let's do something about it. So that was the legislative breakfast in a nutshell. I will say that we also did share the, uh, the recent straw poll, I guess you could say, from the Memorial Valley Superintendents around the proposed cellphone legislation, and that shows it's also in the drive that eighty six percent of local districts supported that as well. So those are the two big pieces that we talked about. We're really focused on special education. So in terms of correspondence, I will reach back out to all the legislators who attended the meeting. I'm sharing the information with you, and, uh, and we'll kind of go from there. So that's all I had on that.
Excellent. And you, I support you bringing that up at our tri board meeting. I'm guessing most of our committee does as well, so.
Great.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Teaching and learning, Mr. Woodlock.
Well, do we want to do the MSBA update first?
Oh, I'm sorry. Sure.
So we'll continue on. We had our school building committee meeting last week, and I am pleased to announce that the committee overwhelmingly, not unanimously, but overwhelmingly supported additional funding for the parking lot and the curbs and the lights so that when we finish this project, we have a completed campus out front. I have a diagram of that I'll show you in just a minute. Additionally, the committee unanimously supported adding an additional scoreboard, a second scoreboard, to the middle school gym. So now we'll be able to drop the curtain and run games across court with two independent scoreboards. So that's a potential revenue for us. And anyone who's been to the elementary school on a Saturday or Sunday throughout the winter knows that that gym is jam-packed with basketball all day long. So that alleviates some of that. Currently, we're talking about our summer logistics plan. This is a, a big conversation, particularly in light of the additional funding being approved for the parking lot and curb. We anticipate right now, we anticipate having two hundred and ten available spots for the beginning of the school year. In comparison, by la- last November, we had issued two hundred and thirty seven tags on this campus. So we're about twenty five short right now where we were last year. I haven't met with the principals yet. I will meet with them before our OAC meeting on Thursday to understand this senior class size versus the sophomore class size and understand potential licenses that are coming up. Additionally, because this is only going through November, we will have an opportunity to capitalize on some parking out back on the baseball field and the loading dock area to probably make up that difference of two thirty seven. So right now, preliminarily, we're, I would say there'll be no limit on tags that'll be sold to eligible seniors and juniors, but I just want to confirm that this week. So that's where we are in terms of fall parking, and then I'll coordinate with, uh, summer logistics. It's gonna be a lot of, a lot of payment work going on here this summer. Additionally, the good news that came out of last Wednesday night's school building committee meeting was the, the project financially is, is healthy. And right now, conservatively speaking, and, and, and believe me, our, our OPM is as conservative as you get. Conservatively speaking, it looks to be that this project will come in about two point eight million dollars under budget, uh, which is great news. And that does include fully funding the softball field from the budget, and it also allows a little over five percent, like five point one seven percent of contingency for any unforeseen issues that may come down the pike. I know we have three other members of the school building committee here. If there's anything I missed or you'd like to opine on at this time?
The only thing I would like to add, Dr. Flanagan, is the additional scoreboard was part of the original project, and it was cut during the VE process where we had to cut four million dollars from the project. All the infrastructure, all the wiring, everything was included in the project, so we would've just had a wire there. And the scoreboard was nineteen thousand dollars, which in rentals and that type of stuff, we'll make back in no time at all. So it was, in my opinion, it, it, that was a great move. We're gonna discuss the parking lot, but we had previously approved three hundred and thirty five thousand dollars to pave the whole parking lot and the exit road. What Dr. Flanagan is gonna show us is that area needed some additional work. So we approved an additional four hundred and seventy seven thousand dollars to replace three light fixtures, which would have been the only light fixtures that hadn't been replaced. Repairing the sidewalk out here, the end of the sidewalk out here for the school, and then the additional work to support the new pavement. So Dr. Flanagan will get more into that, but.
So you can go to the next slide, Mr. Woodlock. So the, the schematic on the left was, you know, part of the original design, and when we committed the three hundred and thirty five thousand, not committed, when we earmarked or as a committee voted to support three hundred and thirty five thousand dollars to do the parking lot over, it encompassed everything on the right side, all the black that you see on the right side, and really refining everything. What we came to find out was we had the civil engineer come out and look at the parking lot, and that three thirty five really was for just a mill and an overlay of the existing roadway and parking lot. What we found, or what the engineer found, was that some of the storm drains and substructure was so bad, it was a complete rebuild of the road. So that's why the cost went up significantly. At the end of the day, it needed to be done. So you couldn't mill an overlay, it wouldn't be recommended by anyone, to mill an overlay, bad infrastructure. So it was either not do it and end up with the project on the left, or commit to doing the whole thing and having a, a finished campus. And one of the things that we talked about at the time was, you know, when we built Tingsboro High School, in a matter of six years, we had six portable classrooms off the front of the school. When we built the elementary school, went five years before the bicentennial fields were actually done. You know, we, we need to do, we had the one opportunity to do this project and do it right, and that committee overwhelmingly supported doing the right thing and finishing the project on the right. Additionally, the project, the way, you really can't see it here, but right in front of the high school, the, the, the cement sidewalk, you can see a distinct line where, or demarcation where it was stopped, where the new sidewalk ends and the old sidewalk is there. And the old sidewalk is crumbling. So that will all be replaced, as well as the light fixtures, which will mask the other thirty two lights on campus. So we will have a complete finalized project when this is said and done. Conversation came up, you know, could we potentially do this through capital asset committee or, or some form of borrowing down the road? We've all driven these roads. We know that there are other needs throughout the town, so the money's here now, we have the opportunity to do it right, let's do it right. So, so that's why that decision was made. So it'll be a busy summer, but it'll be exciting.
Any discussion on any of that? Yes, sir.
I have a question. The turnaround behind the high school.
Yes. That's right now, eighteen-wheelers can't pull behind the high school and turn around. So that will allow eighteen-wheelers to cut back there and actually turn around. That was actually something that was in the original design as well and was VE'd out when we were talking about cost savings.
But right now, you can't back up to that loading, that loading dock right there.
Right.
That's why there's a big dirt patch.
Yep. And then the next slide. Thank you to, uh, Mr. Thanos for the pictures. Uh, I was too busy talking on the tour and didn't happen to take any pictures. So here's some pictures we can look at. First one on the left is the main entrance, again, it's the woodwork going down the, the main, main drag there, Main Street. You can see that the wood looks soffit in the cafeteria in the middle picture, really bringing it to life and really coming together. And the picture on the right is a mock-up, but that's just some of the fall graphics or some of the wall graphics that will be throughout the entire school. So basically, they had to put this mock-up, and that will not be a finished product, but they had to put it in so that our architect could sign off on the installation of this, to say, yes, this is how we want it installed. So that's those pictures. The next slide is the flex performing space. You can see the sound barriers on the ceiling on the picture on the left, and just another shot of the flex performance space from the catwalk. And that's the MSBA update.
All right. And the wings, before we get to Mr. Woodlock, but we did a tour, a group of us, last Wednesday, and it's really coming together. It's, the wings of the school are almost completed, so it looks amazing, and our staff and kids are gonna be lucky to attend that school. So teaching and learning, Mr. Woodlock.
Okay, thank you. So, um, last Wednesday, March nineteenth, we held our second of three during, you know, school year all admin meetings. It's very hard to get all of our admin together during the school year, so we've committed to that for this year. And our focus was really on utilizing the DESI coherence guidebook, which is, basically gives us a, um, a structure and a prac, practices and protocols to kind of self-evaluate. We talk a lot about wanting to strengthen our MTSS, our tier-one instruction, support our teachers. It's hard sometimes to measure, like, are we doing a good job? You know, I think we're doing a good job, but, you know, we always want to be self-reflective on some of those things. So some of the things we looked at was really looking at the self-assessment of the MTSS pro- progress, talking about drafting and instructional vision. We talk a lot about what good instruction looks like, but we haven't ever crafted a document that says, this is what we believe. Sometimes I would, I would argue that crafting such documents can sometimes feel like a waste of time for people. Like, oh, let's create a document, we need a vision statement, we need this, and then some people don't ever look at it again. So certainly, that wasn't our intent, just to say, like, how can we put into words for our staff, for ourselves, like, these are the, these are our core values when it comes to instruction? So we kind of began that process. I drafted a, a really rough draft of what it could look like in building to building. We mixed up in different groups, and we kind of said, we love this part, this part I'm not so sure about. So that was a really healthy process, I think. And then some of the guiding questions within the coherence guidebook about, you know, what does our progress look like? And so here's an example, one of the slides from the slide deck we used last Wednesday. So those guiding questions, how well does our vision show up in our daily practice and our classroom experience? So we are engaging this week in our walkthroughs, so we have members of each admin team come to different buildings, and we walk through five or six classes, and we talk about it. It's not evaluated for teachers, it's really for us. And just start talking about, like, are we doing what we say we want to do? Is that happening? Is there evidence of that? So that's a really important part of that, to say, like, all right, you know, yes, no, or is it somewhere in the middle, and what do we need to focus on? How well do we ensure that all students have equitable access to our instructional vision? Meaning, all students. Our students, we talk a lot when we look at MCAS and standardized testing about our high-needs population, our students with disabilities, our ML students, our low-income students, but not just them, but all of our students. Are we meeting the needs of all of our students across the board? And the last one is, how well do our systems and structures support our instructional vision? That we really talked about, and you were all a part of that. You know, when we talk about, we want to do this, does it start from the top, and is that where our priorities lie when we budget? And we talk about, these are the things that are important to us, things that you've supported and been really gracious about throughout. So those are the things we really want to take, take time in the middle of the year and say, are we doing what we say we want to do? And if we're not, what do we need to do differently? Because March is the time of year when we start kind of buttoning up, like, these are the things we said we wanted to do. Can we do them by the end of the year? And if not, what do we need to start doing to make sure that's prioritized for next school year so we don't lose sight of it? We, you know, Dr. Flanagan says it a lot, we don't want to just pick something up and put it down. We want this to be a cyclical process where we are considering already, what do we need to start thinking about for next year so that we can continue making progress? So I thought it was a really valuable few hours that we spent together. Anytime we can get a bunch of people together talking about good instructional practices and what do we need to do to make our schools better, really smart people in the room, I think you, you make progress. So, um, I don't know, Dr. Flanagan, anything else? Did I miss anything?
Uh, no, I think you hit it pretty well on the head. I think it's important, yeah, to just having the conversation, having dialogue, and allowing us to come together and talk about social practice and calibrate. And, and, and the walkthroughs that we've been going through this past week are, are really insightful because we all see something a little bit different. And to get back in, in a room and talk about that and really say, I really like this, geez, I didn't see that, I'll look for that next time. The more calibrated we are as an administrative team, I think the better off we can drive instruction or improve instruction or support our teachers with instruction.
So any questions I can answer?
I just want to say that I love the idea of the walkthroughs and that the different administrators are walking through the different buildings because, like Dr. Flanagan said, someone's gonna see something that someone else doesn't see, and it's just a great way to get feedback on, are we doing the things that we say we want to be doing? So I love that idea.
Great. That's something we hadn't done until this year. It was really, we would go to the high school and do walkthroughs with the high school admin, middle school, middle school admin. So this year, we committed that every administrator would do a walkthrough in one of the other buildings at one point during the year. So we do this four, four weeks per year, so everyone, as we, our last one is tomorrow, every administrator will have been on a walkthrough in every building, including their own, so.
And I'd love from a, like, transition standpoint that you have, like, the elementary school going to the middle school, the middle school going to the elementary school, the middle school going to the high school, the high school going to the middle school, to help with those, hopefully that helps with those transitions.
I think it, I think it's making a big impact.
Great.
Yeah.
I think it's kind of nice, too, just to have the students seeing the different administrators in their building, putting names to faces, just getting, you know, recognizing people. I think that's pretty nice, too, for the students. And I think they kind of like seeing, you know, oh, there's Mrs. Kavanaugh, or, you know, there's Dr. Flanagan, or.
This afternoon, when we went through the middle school and Kristen Russo was going in, and these are students she had a couple of years ago, right? And she's, you know, just good to see, like, checking in on them as they're working, and they were happy to see each other, so it was nice, yeah.
Do they get introduced when you go into the classroom?
No.
Do they know who they are?
We, we try not to be intrusive, you know, just kind of settle in for six or seven minutes. It really depends on the teachers and the students and kind of the class atmosphere sometimes. At the elementary school, the kids talk to you. You go into a second-grade class, you'd be like, who are you? And so it's, it's really, it's different in each school, but to your points, I think as administrator, when I became a principal and got into all the classrooms in the building, that was one of the most eye-opening experiences for me. Like, I can't believe all of these things are happening I didn't know about, which is a shame, right? When I took this position and got to be a part of the middle school and then in the elementary school and being in those classrooms, I am learning so much more, right? So having that experience myself, that was one of the, the catalyst for saying, like, we need to get all admin in all buildings. It's really too valuable to miss the opportunity.
Well, and I, I think, I think, too, it, it shows the community the commitment that the district has to just continuing to move forward and always check in and be progressive. And so it's, I, I appreciate it a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you. New business. Policy first reads.
I'll turn it over to the chair of the Policy Subcommittee.
Yes.
Dr. Flanagan. We have two policies coming up for first reads. The first is policy F G for flag policy. This is in sync with what the town has back from last fall. And basically, it's on our school committee-controlled property, flying the flags of the US, Commonwealth of Mass, and Town of Tingsboro. Accordingly, it's not our choice to decide whether to raise it, the client to raise a flag on, you know, school committee-controlled properties, particularly as a public forum of a non-governmental agency. The school committee superintendent or designee would be the one to go through and do the execution of the policies. And I assume we'd like to do separate votes.
Probably, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so I'll seek a motion to approve the Tingsboro Public School Flag Policy.
So moved.
First read, sorry.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have a question. What's considered flying a flag? So say, French class or Spanish class, you know, can they put, like, a picture of their French flag on the wall, or is that considered flying a flag?
Just in front of the school.
Okay.
In front of the school.
Okay.
And then something that I did ask during the Subcommittee meeting was whether this was in line with the MASC, like, standard policy handbook.
And then something that I did ask during the Subcommittee Meeting was whether this was in line with the MASs, like, standard policy handbook. And Dr. Flanagan informed me that there is no policy in the MASs standard policy handbook related to the flags.
It's really a community-based decision.
Yeah, this is what our SLUT board decided to go with, right? So we're just kind of staying in line with them?
Correct.
Okay.
I know we're doing this as a first read, but you kept this, to do a vote and then do a second vote, is it a second read? Do we actually have to?
Typically, what people.
Take time to consider it.
Typically, what people see tonight, and it's entirely up to the committee, what we've done historically is done, done as a first read tonight, then if anyone wants to opine or comment in any manner, they'd get their comments to the chair of the Policy Subcommittee over the next two weeks, and we can do it as a second read at the next meeting. That's what we've been doing. I don't know what the world committee is.
If there's no questions, we can just vote to approve the policy.
At the next read, yeah.
I, I don't see a need to jump to second read tonight, I think. We should stay in line with president.
That's fine.
Okay.
What I got is a hold.
All right, so I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? That cares.
The second one is Policy JEC. It's for upper entrance-age school admission. And just reading it, individual eighteen years of age or older seeking admission to Tingsboro Public Schools with inadequate or no prior academic credits will be referred to programs offered locally or at Massachusetts Community Colleges. Any individual who has completed high school or attained a GED or equivalent will not be admitted to Tingsboro Public Schools. Special education students between the ages of eighteen and twenty-one will be assigned on a case-by-case basis in accordance with their IEPs.
Could I get a motion to approve the Upper Entrance Age School Administration Policy?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? And that was a first read on that policy as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Finance, Mr. Messina.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For signing of bills, we had nine bill warrants presented to the committee tonight. I do have them back-approved. As always, in your drive is the list of warrant numbers, accounts, and amounts. For signing of payrolls, since we last reviewed, we had the payrolls of March 10th and 24th. Those warrant numbers, accounts, and amounts are also listed in your drive. As well in your drive is the reports that make up the February 2025 financial package. That is your school committee budget at the end of February, your revolving account balances at the end of February, as well as the student account balances at the end of February. And I will leave the March first enrollment to the chair.
Thank you. Tingsboro Elementary School, two hundred and, uh, seven-hundred-and-twenty-seven, Middle School, three-ninety-eight, High School, four-eleven, out of district twenty-four, for a total of one-thousand-five-hundred-and-sixty students.
And that's it?
Thank you very much, Mr. Messina. We have nothing for other. So school committee discussion. Start with Evan.
Evan, thank you.
Yeah, thank you to everyone for the first-read votes on two policies. Mr. Messina, thank you again for your work on the budget. With Dr. Flanagan, certainly, I think the legislative agenda is particularly coming up with the, the tri board, and I certainly am glad to speak from it from a historical standpoint, too, because it's been the same since 1994. And Mr. Woodlock, thank you for the assessment report. That's it.
Nothing.
Good, thank you.
I'm all set.
I'm all set.
Thank you.
I just wanted to very quickly say that I know we have our sports that are being, they're kicking off, they're getting started with their season, and so good luck to our spring coaches and all of our spring athletes.
Thank you, Joe, and the Budget Subcommittee for all the hard work. It's never an easy lift, so I appreciate all the hard work.
Uh, Dr. Flanagan, I want to thank you and the MVSA once again for the push to have a voice with the legislature on the special education costs. I know that's been a recurring theme the last three cycles on the Budget Subcommittee, is just how unsustainable and ridiculous they're getting. So that is such a huge need to be addressed at a state level, so thank you for all the work on that. And the new building does look absolutely fantastic, and it is going to be a completely different energy here next year, and I'm so excited to see what that looks like. It's going to be great.
Uh, Mr. Messina and the Budget Subcommittee, thank you for all your hard work on this. I know it is a ton of hours and, uh, it's, it's not easy and it's a grind, but we appreciate all that you do to get us here. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
All right, I'll echo everyone else's comments. We do not have a need for executive session this evening, so I will seek a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? That cares. Thank you, and have a good night.